Turn it over to Commissioner Johnson to lead us in that case.
Let's pray. Holy Father, please be with us tonight as we go through the town's business. Be with our citizens as they go through their daily lives. Would be with those who are lost and sick and need your guiding hand. In these things we name, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, next up is the approval of the agenda. Do you hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item three is appoint Kirsten Franklin as finance officer with check signing authority, and reappoint Nathan Page as deputy finance officer with continued check signing authority.
And make a motion.
Second. All right, first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Madam Clerk, does she want to do some swearing in for us?
Would they normally quit?
Yeah.
You'll put your left hand on the bottom and raise your right. You will be at your knees.
I, Kirsten Franklin.
I, Kirsten Franklin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the town of Youngsville.
To the town of Youngsville.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are or may be.
Which are or may be.
Established for the government thereof.
Established for the government thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As finance officer.
As finance officer.
For the town of Youngsville.
For the town of Youngsville.
According to the best of my skills.
According to the best of my skills.
Abilities and judgment.
Abilities and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
If we want to get pictures with.
My car is, thank you.
Six pictures. I don't think you have to push from there.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, you can go back into your place. All right. Okay, so next up is our public hearings. We've got a couple that we need to go through tonight. Just kind of talk about the etiquette for the public hearings. When I call your name, if you will come up, please state your name and address for the minutes. I will call speakers in the order they registered. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. All comments should be addressed to the board as a whole. Discussion between a speaker and a member of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers are asked to be civil and courteous in their language and presentation. Defamatory, obscene, profane, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Rowdy, disruptive, or threatening behavior by members of the audience during or in response to a speaker's comments during the public comment period will not be permitted. We'll be respectful of your time as it means to give each speaker our undivided attention. In order to do this, side conversations are not permitted. If you feel like you need to have a side conversation, the only thing I ask is stand up, step outside, have your conversation, come back in and take your seat. Madam Clerk, I'm assuming this is the list that we have for the public hearings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So the first public hearing for tonight is item A, request to rezon. Property on Fleming Road across from Fleming Farm Road. I'll go ahead and open the hearing to the public as of 7:05 and turn things over. I'm so used to seeing you this way, I'm sorry. And by the way, by the way, welcome back. So now we're going to put you on the spot.
I know.
And listen to your staff.
So regardless of zoning, the applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property from agricultural to mixed use. accommodate text books and office space. The M and T zoning would provide for a good transition between the industrial to the north and west and the agricultural to the south and east. The rezoning is consistent with the goal of attracting businesses from the comprehensive plan as it would allow new businesses to locate within the town. It is also consistent with the future land use map. Moreover, while the town has many residential properties in development in which people can live, there are few developments where people can work. The development may provide much-needed employment and business opportunities for the town as well as increased economic development potential. The planning board unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning at their meeting on the January 26th, and staff is also in support of the request.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll go ahead and open up to comments from the public, and the first signature for speaker that I have is Glenn Ellington, 604 Fleming Road. Ms. Florence, I apologize. Do you want to do the three-minute timer for these?
Yes. My name is Glenn Ellington and I live at 604 Fleming Road. I don't have much to say, but this parcel of land has already been part of a lawsuit previously and a litigator, and we have results. We don't understand why it is up for discussion again. We 100% agree what Barbara is about to say, and we will fully apply all means to restrict this property as agricultural用地. And that states in the lawsuit already previously litigated by the previous landlord. Now, this landlord, don't go and say why this landlord, you know, thinks that he can change it. But the original landowners who subdivided all of the property on Fleming Road put in place these restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellington. Next up, we have Barbara Robinson, 588 Fleming Road.
Yes, Barbara Robinson, 588 Fleming Road. I feel like it's Groundhog Day because I stood before you all last August and kind of make about the same kind of speech, but here we go. So as I said, I was here last August and I informed you of the restrictive covenants on this property on Fleming Road across from East Fleming Farm Drive. That property is once again being considered for rezoning to mixed use two from agricultural. In your packet, you have a letter from our attorney describing the covenants and giving his opinion that they still are valid. The covenants were duly recorded in Franklin County and were indexed to the property in question. At the planning board meeting, the attorney representing the developer stated that the covenants were not applicable to the property. After that meeting, we contacted the original attorney who settled this lawsuit. They reviewed their files and determined that the covenants were in fact still valid. Our attorney sent a request to the developer's attorney asking her to explain the basis for their conclusion that the covenants were not valid. He asked for a response by February the 8th, which was yesterday, but no response was ever received from them. We have provided ample documentation to you to show that the covenants are valid, while the developer has not provided anything concrete, only a verbal opinion from their attorney. The YDO states that when there are restrictive covenants that are more stringent than the rezoning request, the more stringent zoning should apply, and that's section 1.8 of your YDO. If you approve this rezoning and the covenants are found to be valid, then you have violated your own YDO. Perhaps the town attorney should review this matter, and this request should be tabled for now. But beyond the issue of restrictive covenants, there are other reasons why this property should not be rezoned to mixed use two. This property sits in the middle of Fleming Farms, a community of many farms. Fleming Farms is populated with horses, cows, chickens, and a variety of wildlife, including deer, fox, possums, raccoons, blue heron, wild turkey, skunks, which lived under my barn for a while, and I can tell you they're there, and other creatures. They're just all over the place. To put a mixed-use parcel in this environment doesn't make any sense to me. In addition, there's a big demand for residential agricultural property in our area. I know you mentioned that there's plenty of residential property, but there's not plenty of residential property with acreage. Most of the property that's going in right now are very small plots, houses, next to another where I can reach out and shake my neighbor's hand through the window. There's nothing like what's in our area. The houses that was just next to mine sold in December after being on the market for only a few weeks for $520,000. Since I'm speaking for more than one person, can I continue?
So that wasn't necessarily agreed upon. As far as, who else would you be speaking on behalf of? Because, so, and I probably should have led with this. If you're going to speak and represent like a large swath of people, obviously, yes, you would get the 10-minute time limit. I didn't get any notification that that was going to be the case tonight. I assumed it was going to be individuals speaking. We can probe the board and ask if they want to extend the time for another.
I've just got a few more comments.
Absolutely, extend. Let's go.
Yes, it's fine.
I met the new owner who just bought this house next to me, and he'd been looking for a property with acreage for more than nine months, and he jumped to buy this one even though he can't even move into it until April. Surely, the developer can abide by the covenants and still develop the property such that it's consistent with the neighborhood. There's no doubt that such a development would attract buyers without any trouble. Another option for the property which we would support would be as a nature park. We contacted Scott Hammerbacher, the planning director for Franklin County, as to the interest of the county in purchasing this property for a county park. The property would be quite suitable as it had a stream that crosses the property. It's hilled, has hills and is wooded. Nature trails for hikers and dog walkers would attract plenty of people in and around Youngsville and be a good natural attraction for the town, as there are not any other parks like this in our area. Mr. Hammerbacher expressed interest in this idea, provided, of course, that the current owner would consider selling it. In short, if you do approve this rezoning request, we'll be prepared to take further legal action. There are better options for this property, and the requests that you deny this application are at the very least tabled. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. All right, next up, we have Charles Howes, 615 Fleming Road.
So I could just agree 100% of everything Barbara said. My comment is pretty basic. Number one, I think, well, let me start off. I don't know that there's been a legal opinion that's been provided to the commission on this. Obviously, there was no legal opinion provided to the plan. So my first comment is, I think you should have legal opinion about this. Second of all, you know, if you're going to put mixed use in, please put mixed use, particularly higher-density mixed use, is downtown. Why you would put mixed use out in the middle of an agricultural area is, to me, it just, I just don't understand the logic for it. Particularly when there's so much open space in downtown Youngsville. That would be perfect to develop as mixed use, particularly higher-density mixed use. So I'm scratching my head as to why that particular piece of property was going to be. The request and the reason with the mixed use, it's not even single family, but mixed use, that makes no sense.
Thank you, Mr. Howes. Next up, we have Greg Duffy, 538 Fleming Road.
Everybody, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Greg Duffy. I live at 538 Fleming Road, and I've lived there for 31 years. Somebody all know me. I know Fonzie and Ms. Redd. If your kids ever played soccer at Yaks in the last, I don't know how many years, lot, I was probably their referee at some point or another. What are you going to say?
I'll let that one slide because you've given me yellow cards before, so.
My job is to keep the game fair, not throw out cards, all right? If I gave you one, you deserve it.
I probably deserved it, yes.
Anyway, I want to speak more generally about Youngsville and its progress, its growing, which is too fast, in my opinion. I moved out here from Raleigh. I grew up in Raleigh. I moved hoping to find my place in nature, my country experience, my little town life. And for a while, it was like that. It was great. Surrounded by wilderness. My road was dirt. Nobody came out there. But we all know it's not like that anymore. But I don't want to speak about everything. I just want to talk about one anecdotal measure in my mind of how you tell when your town is growing too fast and is too big for its roads specifically. When you try to drive around Youngsville, especially if you do it in the morning or in the afternoon, there are too many places where you go and you can't turn left. Can't turn left. Left past the year with the both lanes and the cars do not stop coming. Try and turn left from Nassau Street on the Main Street. Almost any time of day, that's undoable. Try and turn left from Winston Street on to College Street. Try and turn left. All the people who live south of Youngsville and come up 96 every day and have to go through the middle of town. The cars coming down Cross Street do not stop in the morning. And maybe one or two, three cars get through at the light. The rest of them sit there until it backs up for hundreds and hundreds of yards. Those four people who live on Winston Street, you know Winston Street is a lot, at one end is Water Tower. On the other end is College Street. They moved there thinking they were on a quiet little town road. Now they're on a major thoroughfare. I don't know what car count is going down that road every day, but I'm pretty sure it's in the thousands. Look at it in the morning. The cars coming from north, they turn left off 96, they turn right across street, they come to that light. And it's a major traffic situation. Consider how big our town is. The traffic in Youngsville and the way we're growing and the way we're managing it is a bit to me like a patient who goes to a doctor. This patient is overweight. This patient has diabetes. This patient has high blood pressure. This patient has high cholesterol, and I'm not talking about myself.
I interrupted him, so I'm going to give him.
Yeah, that was interruption down here. All right. Both the doctor and the patient know something's got to be done to improve this patient's quality of life. But what do they do? They decide to put that patient on an all candy pizza and chocolate chip diet. You know, you're making it worse. There's nothing better. We're making it worse. And every time we have one of these meetings, every time there's proposed development for this, there's a housing development, there's a business development, we're making it worse. I'd like to see us slow down. I know that none of you are voting personally what your ideas are. You have regulations and you have guidelines. You have rules that you're following, so you're not voting your own personal beliefs in this. So, you know, I understand that, but is there ever going to be a day? Is it within the realm of possibility? That one day these guidelines can be restructured to where we're saying, we have enough. We have enough people. We have enough cars. We have enough businesses. We don't need any more. Go somewhere else.
All right.
All right, I got one more sentence.
Okay.
Most popular TV show in America is a show called Yellowstone, where, I'm going to have a lot of commas here, where Kevin Costner plays a rancher who runs for governor and his platform is, if you want progress, don't vote for me. I am the opposite of progress. I am the wall that progress bashes itself against. And I think whatever is necessary, we need to do some adjustment of our ideas so that we're more like that. So we'd be a small town where you can drive where you want to go, you can enjoy nature and not be surrounded by houses, businesses, concrete, and traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. All right, next up, we have Carl Warkowski, 38 Fleming Road.
So I want to reiterate what Barbara mentioned of the restrictive covenants. When the covenants are more restrictive in nature than the zoning, according to the YDO, I think it's section 1.8, and 160D, which is the state law, the covenants govern irrespective of the zone. And that is state law, and that's your own YDO. If you start rezoning things that are different from the covenants, you're opening yourself to exposure. We wanted the legal counsel to address this issue at the planning commission, but she was not there. Legal counsel, she was there as a filling for planning, so she couldn't talk on it. So that didn't get answered. I went to school for nine years after high school, and I'm a biologist. And I have repeatedly asked them for the biological assessment reform, but I didn't get it. I talked to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the federal department here in the state, and mentioned biological integrity issues, and she said it would be prudent before you go forward to review the biological assessment and have people other than biobstitudes actually speaking on it and actually give you a formed opinion about what integrity is out there when it comes to biological assets. And there may be a better use for this parcel. According to the numerous people I spoke to, everybody from the Tarver Land Conservancy and the county, there is pork bond money, there is estate money, there's wrecking loo money, and there is foundation money. And they could easily cover the cost of this and have it as a nature reserve. We don't have any parks down here in the southwest, and it would be wonderful. And if you're going to protect an area or nature, you want the highest biological integrity to be protected because it makes the most sense. 400,000 square feet of flex space is not necessarily compatible with preserving the biological integrity. And all we're asking for is a balance here. Even if you don't give a crap about environment, can you at least feign a concern? Just feign, just pretend that you care, and at least talk about your concern about the loss of this biological asset. In regards to, everything doesn't have to be monetized. Some things are inherently valued just based on what they are. And everybody really shares in the assets of biological parks. And think about the legacy you could actually provide to the next generation by preserving this in perpetuity. I really have nothing else. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
All right, next we have, I hope I don't butcher this last name, Amanda Burbank.
I have really, really bad hearing.
Okay, I thought I was on it, but I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, so I will speak quickly. I am the attorney here on behalf of the applicant. I'm out of the Morningstar Law Group based out of Raleigh. I appreciate you guys having us here. I am a real estate lawyer by trade. I do land use work in front of boards like yourself. I also do transactional real estate law, the boring stuff, the contracts, the title, all of that stuff. So we actually became associated with the project back in August of 2022 when we became aware. And I'm here primarily to speak on the restrictive covenant. The rest of the engineering team, traffic consultants, they're here and they've signed up as well. We were pulled in in August of 2022 when we learned of the restrictive covenant that you've heard about today. The short story is when my client took title to the property, he pulled independent third-party title insurance. And this item was not identified as burdening his property on his title insurance. So we were a little confused. Over the course of the next couple of months, we actually worked directly with Fidelity National Title to understand sort of what the covenant was doing, what his application was. And the real short story is on the boring side of things, we actually filed a title, a claim with the title company to actually see if it applied to our property because we had no prior knowledge of it. We received a response back in October from Fidelity that says pretty clearly that the restrictions are not a part of our property's chain of titles. So we sat down with the town. We tried to explain this. We talked a little bit at the planning board about sort of the law of restrictive covenants generally in North Carolina. And as y'all understand, I'm sure as landowners and, you know, independent property owners, that the law of restrictive covenants in North Carolina is there to be interpreted pretty strictly because we have, you know, vested interests in people being able to use their own property that they own as they see fit. That's an important right to us under our government here. We do believe the application of the restriction is a private matter. Whether there is other litigation against us in the future, we understand that that's certainly a possibility. However, we feel that the opinions you're hearing tonight are really not relevant to the town's exercise of its actual regulatory authority. We think this is supported in 160D, also by case law. I would like to say on the record, I will go back and check with my admin to make sure there wasn't a stand issue. I have not received anything from their attorney regarding this, but I will go back and double-check. We do think that, given the location of folks here, sort of the fact that we had two neighborhood meetings, we've done the outreach, we've gone sort of the neutral kind of third-party route to see if this actually applies. But at the end of the day, we think that the restriction, it is or it isn't what it is, and we don't really think it impacts the town's regulatory authority to actually pursue a rezoning. We think they're completely separate procedures. You've got your plug. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burbank. Next up, we have Craig Dour, 403 April something Lane Carey. Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't read that.
My name is Craig Dour. I am here as the applicant, behalf of the property owner. Again, I apologize, the property owner is not able to be here tonight because of the change of dates. I would have been here in January if this had gone as originally scheduled. I'm here specifically to talk about the land use. Any questions back from the board later about the restrictive covenants, I would defer to Amanda. When we started this project over a year ago, we looked at all different options for development of site, determining what the highest best use for the property is. That's what we were trying to do. He purchased it. He's looking to develop it. We originally approached this as an industrial site, primarily because that's what future land use was at the time. When we became aware of the covenants, we pulled that, we met with town, we made structure to do a mixed-use project. Straightforward, our mission is to create jobs, employment uses, tax base, job creation. That's what we're trying to do. We also are going to, when we move forward with the project, if we're successful here tonight, we're going to do everything we can to maintain the rural territory of Fleming Road, something to support this property owner. I know there's been a request to me to share the threatened endangered species study we did. That is not something that is required me to share with general public. Something that we did as our choice to be proactive so that if we got further into the project and we started doing our environmental permitting that are required, that we would know whether or not we have an issue. We hired a professional firm that does that work, not myself, not a biopic, whatever that meant. And they coordinated with Fish and Wildlife Services, determined that there are eight species identified in this whole area, and none of them would be affected by our project. Our traffic consultant, Dr. Wong, is here to speak on the traffic, and my partner in this, Mark Lawrence, here to speak on this. We did get a request earlier this week for property owner to annex the property into the town. It's not something that's required. Don't need to annex into the town for rezoning. We don't need to annex into the town for public utilities. But we opted to follow the annexation to be consistent with our whole purpose for this is to create tax base, to create, bring jobs, bring economic development into the town. One of the people in this room here today that spoke are bringing a nickel into the town in terms of tax base. That is what we're trying to do here. We do have, we did consult at length with the Franklin County Economic Development Department, and they are supportive of what we're trying to do here. We did get, we had one of our other people to position the town clerk, either Reed and their record, in support of the right.
Okay, thank you. And I think we do have that on file.
Yeah, we just got it.
I apologize you couldn't be here in person, but.
Thanks for that, sir. And so is it Doctor Wong or? Okay, all right. I thought you said doctor. I just wanted to make sure. So if you could say. All right. Black and white.
Good evening. My name is Val One. I'm traveling here with H and P, right here from Kansas State. It's on through with the husband, Biggry, and she was on five. Right here from N C State, it's on three with my husband, Biggry, and she was on five with the H and P. Has been practicing traffic in the area since then. Here we have been working with a applicant and with the town staff since the summer of last year. And on this project, we've been rescoping, just going discussions and talking to generations and members and traffic. Yes, that area and get a lot of, or get a lot of insights and all this being accounted in the traffic study. The traffic study was submitted to N C D O T, how you stand for, it's on, okay. And we received the comment, or even the comments from N C D O T. And we, we met all their, and you know, department, uh, N C D O T, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't issue final comments yet, but they didn't really receive any outstanding comments from N C D O T from the town and all these uh, intersections. And we have studied, I heard the comments regarding last of the ministry. We identified a few improvement options, see that track study will continue to work with the time and it takes to explore further options. And also we did all the level, level service analysis, all their, all their, we leave all the U D O requirement on the level service. Unfortunately, I'm here, so, uh, be here and uh, to answer any question you may have.
Thank you so much. And last up, uh, Mr. Mark Norton, 814 Gaston Wood Drive, Raleigh, N C.
I, I don't have anything to add to what Craig and Ohon are, as an author, but would be here to answer any questions for.
Okay, thank you for that. Alright, uh, that's all we have registered for our public comments for that section, uh, for public uh, hearing. Uh, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing as of seven thirty-two and move into item B, uh, which is text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, section ten dot one dash eighteen. Food trucks regulating the number of days per week on a particular site. I will open that hearing to the public as of seven thirty-two and turn things over uh, to Ms. Klinger for staff report.
Both members of the public and some of the downtown merchants have expressed an interest in addressing the proliferation of food trucks. It's going to set up in the same place every day. The proposed amendments will add the requirement that the same food truck not locate on the same lot for more than two days a week. These amendments are consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan of downtown business retention and preserve small town feel. Uh, they were recommended for approval by the planning board unanimously and staff is in support of the proposed amendment.
Alright, thank you for that. Um, and having said that, uh, are there any comments from the public? I didn't see where there was any registrations for this, so. Okay, so I'll open it up to the floor if anyone wanted to make a public comment on this. Alright, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that hearing as of seven thirty-three. And move into item C, annexation petition twenty twenty-two dash four, Holden Village. Uh, open the hearing to the public as of seven thirty-three and turn things over once again to Ms. Klinger for staff report.
This is the um, Town Homes project that came before the board last year sometime, I believe, it was either early last year or late twenty twenty-one. Um, they are working, they finished their construction plans, um, we should be starting.
Okay. Did we have any, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone register online or in person for this? Okay, uh, I'll open it up to the floor to hear uh, any comments from the public. Alright, hearing none, we'll close that out as of seven thirty-four and move into item D, annexation petition twenty twenty-two dash five, Rolling Meadows. Uh, open hearing to the public and turn things over for the last time to Ms. Klinger for staff report.
So this is the neighborhood that that was rezoned back in August. My time's kind of fuzzy right now. Um, and they're just submitting their annexation petitions they um, discussed at that meeting.
Okay, alright, uh, and I will open that up to uh, comments from the public. Uh, I'm, once again, I'm assuming we didn't have anyone register online, okay. Uh, anyone in attendance that would like to make a comment, the floor is yours. Alright, hearing none, uh, we'll close that public hearing out as of seven thirty-five and move into citizens' comments. And we did have one citizen who registered, Kelly Hicks, one twenty-five East Winston Street. Uh, the floor is yours. Kelly not in attendance. Okay, alright, uh, was there anyone else out here that wanted to make a citizen's comment? Alright, seeing and hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. The action request that here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Alright, we've got a first and a second. Uh, any discussion before we move to vote? Alright, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Many opposed? That motion carries. Um, working into old business. Uh, item A is uh, the request to rezone property on Fleming Road across from Fleming Farm Road from ag to mixed use. Any questions, comments, concerns, any discussion topics from the commissioner?
I have a question for the proposed um, development. Uh, do you have any like drawings or anything, any proposed plans that you've come up with that we could see?
A little preliminary at this point, since it's a, a general rezoning, we know that we'll have to get out, like Craig chiming in as well. We know that site plan will be subsequent to this, so we have to kind of get through this part of it to even know what we're able to do before we go in and start pulling together drawings. But we obviously work very closely with Aaron and Nathan, um, and all of the staff. We know that it's going to be subject to all the state labor regulations, access, environmental, anything with D E Q or what have you. I mean, it is that we're going to have to, to speak to all of that. Anything to chime in?
We, we've done some on a bubble diagram scale, so that we understood where our access points would be for the T I A. And we've worked around to come up with what we think an approximate yield could be for the T I A. So I shared the planning board, the intent was to keep the development lower in intensity along Fleming Road, where we're trying to protect the rural character. It's more of the development square footage, kind of right up along the railroad tracks and the gas line.
And just to be clear, the landowner's goal is job creation?
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to walk that property five years ago. And that's the only place you could put anything is up around that railroad track. So, um, the problem I've got with is, is um, I don't know with our chiming in with our attorney, how it's gonna, you know, with our YDO, how that affects us. If it, if it states that we, you know, uh, i- if the restrictions are more pertinent because it's already in place, us changing it is kind of going against our flow, is that?
Sure, I'd, I'd be really happy to speak to that. Um, and I was present for the planning board meeting as people have alluded to. So I've been able to hear more about the legal arguments uh, that were referred to today. Um, and so after the planning board meeting, I reached out to the attorneys for the applicant as well as the attorney for Ms. Robinson. Um, and uh, I was able to speak with both of them this week. I've also reviewed their written submissions and looked at the issues myself and done some legal research. Um, just to be clear, uh, according to the opponents of this request, the only development that would be allowed for this parcel would be a residential with lots sizes and two acres or greater, um, or no development at all. Uh, according to a restrictive covenant that was agreed to by the prior owner of the parcel, um, there was a settlement agreement of the litigation that was referred to and that was reported with the registered deeds. Um, however, for a covenant like that to run with the land to subsequent owners, there are some restrictions that basically may or may not have been met. So as town attorney, I can't advise you whether this covenant is enforceable or not. Um, it's disputed privately between the applicant and the opponents of this rezoning. Uh, whether the YDO um, has a provision to set speaks to that. There are two provisions in the YDO that refer to restrictive covenants. One of them is regarding conflicts with restrictive covenants and other agreements. Uh, that's one point eight dash three. That says that if the YDO has greater restrictions than restrictive covenants, the YDO will govern. It does not say the reverse. However, there is another provision in the YDO, one point eight dash four regarding the effect of uh, restrictive covenants that are already in place when the YDO was enacted. And what that says is that the YDO can't um, interfere with or abrogate those existing covenants. Those continue to exist. And so the request that's before you tonight is a rezoning request uh, from A G to M U two. Um, and basically that, the opponents are correct that if the restrictive covenants are enforceable, and that's the if, that I don't know the answer to. If anyone makes that decision, it's going to be a superior court judge. Um, then they would continue to apply regardless of whether this board decides to rezone the property or not. So your rezoning decision is not going to impair or, or interfere with the operation of those covenants because if they apply, they'll apply. If they're enforceable, then private parties can enforce them. Your rezoning decision does not interfere with that.
And is it my understanding that the restrictive covenants also don't allow for a park?
So I looked at the question of whether, you know, the restrictive covenants, if they are enforceable as written, whether the use as a park that's been proposed by some folks uh, would be acceptable. Um, I also asked Ms. Robinson's attorney that question this afternoon. Uh, he could not speak to that. I um, believe from my own reading that the restrictive covenants would not allow the parcel to be developed as a park. Unless everyone, um, all the covenanting parties and their successors and interests agree to waive that in order for it to be developed as a park. So if everyone got on board and reached that agreement, um, then it could be done. And I will add that rezoning this parcel from A G to M U two would not interfere with development of this parcel as a park. Either zoning district allows for parks and recreational purposes.
Sklinger, has this always from the dawn of time been a, been ag? Has it ever, because I know when we did the YDO, we did kind of that sweeping swath, right, for that area to convert it?
Only but this residential agricultural.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, addressed another issue. I apologize for interrupting. Uh, it was raised during public comment um, obliquely today and, and more, in more detail before the planning board. Um, whether this board could be sued or be liable for making the decision to rezone. Um, and I'd just like to advise you all that the decision whether to rezone this parcel on Fleming Road um, in response to this application tonight, it's a legislative decision. You base your vote based on everything that you know, people you've talked to, as well as what you've reviewed and what you've heard tonight. Um, it should be consistent with prior plans adopted by the board. But um, you have a legislative immunity uh, from your, your, uh, any lawsuits regarding your decision-making tonight. And so each member of the board can base, vote based on what they believe is best for the town without worrying about liability to someone who might be unhappy with the decision of the board as well. Thank you for letting me add that.
No worries. Um, I think there was commentary also as far as um, so it, it sounds like it would, it would be a pretty sizable building. Would the same restrictions for any buffers be?
Yeah, they'd have to buy, buy all the other regulations.
Alright.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so with tech flex, you're saying you, you build a building and then you have somebody that wants to come and rent that space and then you customize it for their needs, is that?
Fairpoint, I apologize for interrupting, uh, you push your brain, but if anyone responds to the board, they're only likely to be picked up from the microphones if they stand up to the podium.
Okay. I love the, I love the fact that you apologized to me for cutting him off. That was.
Yes, by nature of tech flex, you're, you're building a shell and then you're breaking it down into smaller spaces so that various different businesses, depending on their scale, can take four thousand square feet, eight thousand square feet, twelve thousand square feet. Uh, that's just the challenge. We, we do plan to have a mix of different building types. Like I said, the stuff that we would propose along Fleming Road, it could be a little bit more smaller scale. Um, we may, depending on the challenging topography, make it a larger building in the back, we may not. It will look a lot different than what you see along Northbrook Drive or Frankland Park, which is large, single-use buildings. This will be longer, narrower buildings that create that flex of employment uses depending on whether it's the cabinet maker or the turf lawn care guy that's looking for space for their employees, for their vehicles, their vehicles for storage and, within inside.
Alright, so, so I noticed um, to, because that area does have, and I know it's, it's difficult to see from Fleming Road, but when you're looking at it from Google, when you're looking down, there's a lot of properties that kind of butt up to uh, industrial buildings right now. Um, is, is there a plan in place to potentially use that backside as an access instead of having multiple access from Fleming? Yes.
Uh, that, that is one thing that we asked um, our traffic consultant to study. First access point is aligned across from Fleming Farm Road. We've studied two different access points, one, the second access point on Fleming Road further to the north. Or more preferably for us, a connection to Northbrook Drive. Uh, that we can't take action on trying to acquire that right away until we have zoning. Uh, that is our intent, um, but uh, we're not sure if we'll get that or not, but that would be highly desirable from the developer to make that connection, but can't commit to it. We, we'd rather cross that feature than cross the feature on Fleming Road twice. We can either route our traffic to the north and on Fleming Road. That is our preference and that's the direction we would pursue if we're successful.
Okay. Any additional questions, comments, concerns from the board?
Yeah.
Um, so if the plan is jobs, is there a reason why um, you're requesting for mixed use versus something else?
With the town, I can let Aaron or Nathan speak to it. Um, so we, we met with the town and I think the idea there was, see, the mixed use was certainly narrower a designation than like purely industrial or anything like that, which is like the most pervasive district in the town. So, you know, we consulted at least a couple of times. And again, my memory was fuzzy as well, and I believe it was right before we went out. Um, and we sort of discussed sort of the, the owner's goals with sort of the range of things that they might want to do. Um, like for example, I believe the letter, I, I got the letter that y'all got at about the same time that, that Nathan got it. It was like, I believe a turf company. So it's to, those are, those are the desired targets, but we felt like mixed use. Um, also frankly, it's consistent with your land use plan and if the developer did pivot and go a residential route, would that be um, available as well. So we were trying to make sort of a balance, this being something that frankly, you know, I don't, you know, industrial or it's, it's, you know, it's, it's very broad and I don't particularly like to, to go there out in my common way of minds because it is very broad. And people have concerns about it. So mixed use, we just knew too, it gave some flexibility, but also wasn't asking for the, the whole ranch when really all we needed was what we needed to, to effectuate kind of his, his goals on job development in the town. So that was kind of the, the thinking there.
Would? I like the jobs. I like, I like bringing, bringing more businesses here. I don't necessarily like the mixed use because since we change it and then down the road, it's already mixed use and two thousand apartments go there or, and I know that I'm not, I'm not saying that's what you have a plan to do, but let's say something happens, capital falls out, it gets resold to someone else and things happen. We, we've seen it before. We've seen it before. And that's kind of what I was asking about is like, would you be interested in something less with like high density residential? Like, because I was looking and it would be like kind of corporate park or you'd have more. It's pretty close on what your business options are. I think it cuts out the chance that you can put a miniature golf course there. There's like a couple of odds and ends things that you can't have in the corporate park. But the corporate park is business and it more promotes like a pedestrian type of setup.
I think it won't speak too much for Greg, I know he's been in the weeds a lot, he's been a little more than I have. But I think it has to do with a few of the ancillary things that we would like to be able to do. You know, a little bit of storage here and there, the type of tenants that they would be looking at might need a couple of the uses that would hinge a little more with some outdoor type features that I will let Greg pop in there. I just know we consulted multiple times, having withdrawn the first petition. We came back to the town and sat here a couple of times, working with the town staff to try to flesh out what seemed the most palatable and what was kind of aligned with the town's interests as well. So there have been multiple sort of pre-meetings as we've gone through the process, gosh, since what, October, remember?
I would just add that we started with industrial because at the time, future land use was industrial.
Right.
So that was the reason we provided industrial, consistent with the land use. When that changed, now for our knowledge to what it was, we met with staff and that was the advice we got from staff and went back and forth on that. Park was not something to talk about. But we did the traffic study based upon the four hundred thousand square feet. We switched over multifamily, that traffic study would not be valid. It'd be completely different, trip distribution, trip distributions. Don't see that there's a market for that in this area. You don't think there's a market for any more residential in this area, given it's approved on this, on Meadows. We followed the staff lead and it worked with what we were trying to do. So I wish we picked exactly what you want, but our intent is to try to get what you guys want within the zoning that staff kind of directed us towards.
On there, being down, also if you're industrial pattern.
Right.
The more heavy industrial type uses, outdoor storage, stuff like that, that is not proven within.
Okay, right. And that's why I was asking the CP one, I mean, if you look at the bases, or MU is highway, commercial, urban workplace, shopfront, and then detached houses, attached houses, multi-family loans. The CP one is highway, commercial, urban workplace and shopfront with, it's without that housing element added to it. Would that be something that you got to be interested in?
I can't speak to that.
I know your planning has any.
Or yeah.
Our intent is to, our intent is to do what we're doing. I would not want to delay this meeting to change it. Looked at the corporate. I know that when I looked at the industrial, which is five pages of uses, mixed use, which is five pages of uses, trying to figure out whether or not what our client can't develop versus what he could.
And having, having not studied this particular question, I don't do anything at the table without looking because I don't want to do anything that could potentially make us all of a sudden not compliant with your, you doing these maps.
Yeah, I wouldn't say, I wasn't sure though. I think the other reason was it wouldn't be consistent. Logical transition, which is what staff, staff recommended, maybe what the planning board recommends. So we're trying to be consistent with the framework. Changed a little bit when it went from industrial to residential. So that kind of was picking a category that checked those boxes, but fit within your existing plans.
No, and I think it's, it's good conversation to have, right? I mean, for us to make a decision, we got to have everything kind of lay down in front of us. I do feel confident that there's been tons of conversation with Miss Klinger and Mr. Page leading up to this. So I do like the idea of jobs. I do, understanding that it's, you know, decisions that we make are impactful. This is not a parcel of land that the town owns. This is not something that we created. We've got a task in front of us and to act as the legislative body. If the commissioners have any additional questions, I'll need to have everything open until we flush this out.
Yeah, I've got just some general comments, like Mayor Flowers and Commissioner Percy. I am excited about the opportunity to have more jobs with more, you know, retail space. I know my brother-in-law has been wanting to open a spot here and he can't find anything. That being said, I also want parks. I've talked about it plenty of once, sidewalks and parks. And trying to figure out how to make that happen is not always easy. I know Carl brought up some opportunities that he looked into for, for making that happen. This is just a question for you. I know you said your, your client's not here, but if, if the Tech Flex was not an option, would there be any interest in pursuing a park?
Unfortunately, I can say no.
Okay.
We don't.
I didn't mean.
These are questions that we got accepted off.
Yeah. Sorry, I was going to stop you for yourself.
The property owner of this property's business plan. I could say without having him here that, no, he not be interested in selling this as a. He would lose money.
Okay.
Money paid for the land versus what a county or a town could pay for. He's a businessman, that's why he's trying to bring businesses. That's his, that's what he does. That's what he wants to do, much like some of the other local developers that are starting to buy up properties in downtowns and trying to make, revitalize downtown. This is his way of trying to do that, allow those people that are doing that work downtown to have a place to set up their shit. It's on to, frankly, kind of development board about, so. I would say that that would not be something to be interested in.
Okay.
Again, you know, in this particular forum, trying to negotiate or even foresee from a real estate at the door key side of the equation, what that would look like in terms of starting over, purchase agreements, prices, party. I don't know that we can fully speak to that in this particular forum.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair because we've had a lot of information to disseminate and obviously there's been a lot of questions that you guys have had to kind of answer off the cuff. So I can appreciate that. So I'll kind of throw it out there again to the commissioners. Do we have additional questions for? Any of the representatives here from Miss Klinger, from Mr. Page, any just questions in general, talking points?
Just have a talking point that the turf care, Mr. Ryan Terrell, his comment said that adding more commercial space would rejuvenate the area. Point that out.
You know, I just, I don't, yeah, I don't feel comfortable making the decision on it today. I mean, I think that's fair for all parties involved. I mean, obviously they want to get going as fast as possible, but I think we owe it to, I think we owe it to the folks around here to, to at least give it a thought about what we're, you know, what we're doing and doing it the right way. That's just my own personal.
A reflection of the turf care people coming has certainly brought some undesirable traffic. That's all street.
And noise.
And noise.
I was wondering if that was going to come up.
Well, I just, to rejuvenate the area, I think we're pretty rejuvenated. I feel rejuvenated, you know?
Certainly adds to.
Well, so I think, so no, no more comments from the, from the public, guys. We got to come up and figure this out, right? So I think the options that we have in front of us, one, it can be approved. Two, it can be denied, or three, we can continue it and flesh it out a little bit more. I think those are the three things where we are right now. So I'll again, open it back up to the commissioners and entertain whatever you guys want to do to move forward.
I think, I want to make a motion that we table it, just so we understand exactly what, you know, from all sides. I, I get, I get eventually it's going to come down to their attorneys and their attorneys got to figure it out, right? So at the end of the day, I mean, you know, at the end of the day, yeah, I want to table it.
So we got a motion to continue.
Second.
Not while we got a motion on the table. So we got a first and a second in a discussion from the commissioners before we move to vote.
Yeah, Joe, just respectfully, I, what more information do we need? Because the covenants has nothing to do with the rezoning.
It does not. I understand that.
Nation we're waiting for.
Traffic would be one of them.
Well, I.
The type of traffic that's going to break.
I, I want to look at it as an option to be able, as just the Scott just brought up about if we have an ability or for grants for parks or state money for parks or anything like that. At the end of the day, we'll probably end up voting on it next month and it's going to be changed. I, I think that we owe it to ourselves for that. I, I live on that side of, I live on that side of the, of the road. So I understand all that as far as the amount of traffic that we have to go through on a daily basis. So that's why I want to table it. I mean, I, I, I just, you know, I'm, it's, it's a contentious point and it, it needs to be thought through instead of us just voting on it.
I don't think my opinion's going to change.
I, I feel like, what is once bitten, twice shy. I feel like we've been burned on multi-use a few times. That multi-use, I love, I love the idea of bringing jobs into town. I love the idea of bringing jobs that can provide for people in Youngsville to Youngsville and not having to drive to Raleigh and Cary and Apex and not wasting the gas and not wasting the time away from your family and being able to be in Youngsville and stay in Youngsville. But I don't like multi-use too. I don't like, it's, it's just one of those things. It's come up too many times. It's gotten us too many times.
All right, so we're still in the discussion portion. Any other items from the commissioners left to discuss? Because again, we've got a first and a second on a motion to continue. I'm assuming Commissioner Johnson, we're referring to the next board meeting.
Sure, after March.
All right, any additional discussion for, call for a vote? All right, we've got a first and a second. We've gone through discussion, so I'll call for a vote. All proven.
All right.
All right.
Aye.
All right, and? Was that cancelled?
Yeah.
Did I, okay. And, and I was going to say any opposed, I didn't think I'd heard any nays. So, okay, so we've got that continued to the March. I don't know what the exact date on that is, Madam Clark, but I think you can probably clean. Okay. March ninth. Next up is item B, annexation ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four, Holden Village. The action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-two dash four. So here, motion to adopt the annexation.
Motion goes up.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, annexation ordinance twenty twenty-two dash five, Rolling Meadows. Action requested here is to adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-two dash five.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? And any opposed? Motion carries. And item A, new business, text amendments to the Youngsville Development Ordinance, section ten dot one dash eighteen, food trucks regulating the number of days per week on a particular site. Mr. Page and Ms. Klinger, did y'all have anything that y'all wanted to add to this? Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this based specifically on the food truck that is in front of the vape shop? I mean, I don't see any other food trucks in town.
I think it's more of a fairness issue when you've got brick and mortars that are paying a lot in taxes.
Totally agree with you. So it's the only change to the ordinance, the two days a week. Everything else is already in place. Because I will say that some of the things I read don't quite match up with things that are actually happening in town. So we might need to just.
I think once this.
Planner back on staff.
Yeah, I think once, once this is approved or denied or whatever, it's got more teeth for us to be able to.
I do agree, especially because we're trying to get more restaurants in here. It's, I love it. It's a, it's a good idea. Thank you for pushing it forward, planner and people and everyone.
I don't need any credit for that.
And mayor.
Dee knows I was on this several, several times. So, okay. Again, the action requested here is to approve as presented.
I make a motion.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us to number nine, reports and other business. I don't think I have anything. I'll turn things over to Commissioner Percy. All right, Commissioner Lemon?
I can't think of one thing.
Mr. Brain?
I was talking about it before the meeting started, but YABBA is working on merging, dissolving, joining with the chamber. Katie can help me with that language there, but we are, it's, it's been announced to the members in, at the last chamber event. But we are working on finalizing that resolution to make, close everything out with YABBA. And then we will have a, a subcommittee. I may be stating the wrong name that they gave it, but we will still have a local planning group within the chamber that will focus on the Youngsville area and attempt to put together events like the expo, things that everybody enjoyed that YABBA had. So we're doing our best to utilize the strength of the resources that the chamber has and to better serve our businesses in town. Because I think we've got the downtown merchants that are filling the, the role of the downtown area. They're doing a great job with that. There's also the area outside of downtown that still needs our support. So I think we'll have some synergies here that'll work better than having three different organizations.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks for taking part in that.
And I will stop being the, the help desk for.
The IT.
I should have never told him I was a computer engineer. The IT guy, man.
You automatically get voluntold.
Yeah, yeah, so. That's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Lemon said you're the only one here, you're the one I'm going to complain to. We still have dump trucks going up down our streets.
I'm ready for that.
I heard that the last meeting, we haven't seen anything happen since.
That's recent, I was on Long Street yesterday.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. All right, so. The issue with commercial vehicles, obviously, is the DMV slash highway. I was about to interrupt you here. How can you complain about traffic when we're talking about traffic? Sorry. I'll get that.
No, 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 no. Please continue.
So the commercial vehicles are mandated by DOT, DMV and the Highway Patrol, Highway Patrol motor units more specifically. The large Tahos that have highway patrol inside have scales in the back. That's where the big teeth bite. Now, we do have, we are setting up an operation for later on this month. Sergeant Massey had to contact the Highway Patrol. They're going to come in and do somewhat of a train the trainer because there, there are specific laws that we did come up with our laws that we have. And I've just spoke with Katie prior to our meeting and there is some ordinance that we're going to utilize. So we are going to have them come out for two days, do a train the trainer and that way we can use some of their tools in the future. And then we'll have them come back as much as we can, but for two days we have them. They're going to be doing some of that enforcement in there. We also had Sergeant Massey go out and view some of the areas for the trucks to find out how many they are having. Now, during his time and tenure out there, which was normally from around eleven or I think eleven forty-five to when he got off shift or to five in the afternoon, he didn't see a lot of the large trucks going through there. However, doesn't matter, we're going to do an operation. We love setting up our multi-agency operations. So we're setting up one of those. That's later this month.
Okay.
That's probably going to be next week. I will put out the actual time and date for pressure security. After that, the next operation, what we've noticed. Um, after that, the next operation, what we've noticed, and I'm sure you all have noticed, is that as you come through town on Main, let's just use Main Street, cross street and then back the 96 turn on the Main Street. They're blocking that. They're eating the flow of traffic. Um, they're, they're passing over the W L line. So that's our next, we tasked Sergeant Massey to also come up with an operations for that. Most likely that'll be in March. Uh, but that, that's the two focuses that we have along with, um, our speed campaigns that the governor highway safety, uh, they set up, the times and dates they set up. So we have two, one this month and one next month that we're going to go into, and then we'll see what else we have. But that's the two things we're doing. Um, and normally in a town our size or some of the other towns we talked to, Creedmore is the one that we, uh, be with us. Uh, the chief of police was here today doing some of our training with us, um, for Creedmore. Um, you, you try to slow them down as, as much as you can, uh, with using the tools that you have. And then you bring the state agency into assistance. So that's what we did on this campaign. That's what we did. That's what we'll do.
I've, I've actually got some follow-up questions if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Um, so when you say train the trainer or train the trainee, or whatever terminology you use, would that then basically be like a certification for you to, what is that noise I'm hearing?
About tonight, is that?
I think.
My strategy.
Um, heard it again.
I don't hear it today.
That is throwing me off some kind of bad. Is it an alarm?
It's a door propped open or something.
Never heard it, but it is.
I've propped that door open quite a bit before, um.
I didn't know if this, because it was after hours.
That's all right. We'll, we'll push through them. So would that make our guys certified at that point? Or would there be additional state training to get that level of certification?
That's something that.
Click for DOT.
All of these not for a DMV in there, DOT in there. They used to be the way guys, if you remember, the old DMV car with the flag on top.
Yep.
They do all the way. Highway Patrol took it over.
Okay.
But some of your old licensed and deaf agents still know some of the laws and rules.
So no, no through trucks means what on the sign?
No through trucks.
Is it the speed?
Means that they come over there and weigh the truck to make sure it meets that 26,001 pound. And if it does, then they can write them a ticket. And they also, at that point though, that's why we bring in the highway patrol. Cause at that point, they don't just write them that citation for going through the, uh, white roads. They also write them a ticket for how much weight they are over, if they are over. They also write, if they don't have that cover on, uh, the dump truck and those type things. So they, they bring that part in. That's why we wanted to get the highway patrol out here and more of a.
So if a dump truck and a 53 foot trailer go down Winston Street, we, we just have to let them go. Is that what you're saying?
No, we can pull.
Right now.
Porters with our ordinance.
With our ordinance, okay.
And the first time we catch them, of course, with our ordinance and the new law, 168 dash 175, we have to, we have to give them an order.
Okay.
That, that's not something that we did here or we did on our side. That's the general statute that they bring out. Oh, man, I've, I've talked to Katie right before this meeting and we're going to try to set up, um, our, our intent is to try to set up a meeting if possible.
Those are the vendors.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Right. And so we can.
Well, the person who's probably going to be here tonight to speak on the behalf of, uh, that didn't show up, she's got that list somewhere, I guarantee it.
The list of.
Offenders.
Oh, okay.
Repeat. Oh, yeah. Well, I'll just let her put it under the doors.
No, we do our meeting. We want to have the meeting and possibly have you guys sit in there and do it. In fact, you know, especially.
She'll be sitting out on that front porch. You just go by and tell her when the meeting's going to be, and I'll be there, so.
That's fine. Yeah. And that was what we're looking at. That's hospital.
Because everybody on the streets had their mailbox knocked down by a big truck in the, in the last two months. I've put mine up twice. Uh, Wendy, our chiropractor, she got hers whacked up in her yard.
All right. And see, and that's even scarier because that's probably the widest town road.
I don't know that that's the widest town road or not, man. If a dump truck comes down there and a regular car is down there, somebody's on the grass.
It's gotten worse since the Main Street construction. People don't want to be there. I've actually seen semis go down my street now. And that's a big deal.
The property damage is something we can't enforce. That's not something we can't, I mean, that, that is something.
I just need 30 bucks for a new mailbox, man. That's all I need. I mean, they beat it to death. It was like a stomp beer can. But that's nailed in there, baby.
Big metal one up there. Yeah. And that, I'm hoping that they bring something. I'm hoping when the troopers come out, that there is something we're missing. I'm hoping it's something that we've looked up and we've gotten the Katie and we're just like, oh, we didn't see that. I'm hoping that's what we get, but I don't think.
I think at the end of the day, man, if we give out two or three tickets, somebody is, they're not going to come down.
Absolutely going to happen. And that's, on that particular day.
Get out some nice hefty ones.
Say that again.
Give out some nice hefty fines and.
That's what we want.
We'll stop it.
And you know, those, those fines can go up in the thousands of dollars based on the weight. And that's, that's why we get, that's why we're getting them out.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Oh, yeah. I do, I do have. It never fails. I think a lot of our problems with flow is five points. And, and the issue that I'm bringing up is people, they're trying to beat the yellow light and they're basically blocking the entire intersection. So when it's cycling back to green on east westbound or north, you know, north southbound, you can't go anywhere because people are just hell bent on trying to beat that light. So I don't know if we've got any kind of enforcement that we could do there. We could just start slapping tickets on people, uh, to teach them a little bit of a lesson because, I mean, that really does restrict the flow pretty, pretty strongly.
We absolutely do. And, um, we were troubleshooting prior to getting here. And that's why I said, you know, manning college, manning across illegal turns, illegal passing and breaking, blocking intersections of slashing, beating the flow of traffic are the ones we're looking at. That is going to be our next operation. Um, I say March, we could do it as early as the very end of February and then continue it. Uh, you know, we have the directives, the left turn, I think over at the post office. We had to get, I said that for about two or three weeks and it, you're, you're right, Commissioner. It did, it stopped it. Um, you know, and, and we haven't had.
No, it didn't.
Quit.
No, it didn't.
But we hadn't had.
One turned left in front of me this morning.
Okay, okay. Well, what I was going to follow up with, we had had a P I rec sent in that.
No rec.
Well, I mean, had a P I rec, a personal injury rec. That's what I was gauging on. We send, um, each month, uh, the chief of, it's Nathan, it goes over stats and we send those up. Uh, it was one P I rec last month, Nathan, and it was, um, not over in that area. So it's, it's gotten better as far as that is. They still like that a little bit, less personal injury recs, I think is what we're looking. But we can, we can add that to the list. And we can do, I mean, we can do an operation a month. That's not a, that's not a big issue. But, you know, once you hit one area, they move to you there.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll put that on there.
And just curiously, um, when you talk about illegal passing, is part of that considered if you're at a green light and you're turning left, but it's just one lane that the people go around you?
Right. The W L line, you're basically doing illegal passing on W L line. So that.
But really the W L line's in the middle, right? Let's say I.
Going around on the left, is that?
I think.
Around on the right.
Passing on the right.
Oh, I do.
It's passing on the right. Like if, if I'm coming, if I'm coming down Holden and I'm coming from one and I'm turning left so that the old ABC store is on my left and I'm turning left, I should be waiting and everybody should be backed up behind me because that's a one lane road, correct? So when they come around me.
It is correct.
So that's like illegal passing, even though it's not over a W L line, like you're still passing me, but we're in one lane. Is that?
That was super easy passing. Uh, but like the commissioner said, if you have enough room on that right side, not yet, but on the right, uh, we are letting them get away with that.
Yeah.
Where the issue comes in is when they're making the left turn and crossing W on, or they're blocking the roadway.
Yeah.
When they're blocking the roadway, we've got a couple that we can do, beating the flow of traffic and, and start with that. But you're right. Once we write that ticket once or twice and they know not to do it anymore, then it's, it stops.
But the problem, the problem comes there. If you're coming out of town and turning left on US 1A toward Wake Forest, somebody goes around the vehicle at the stoplight.
Right. And that, and then, uh, the other thing I've noticed, that, that line, that single yellow line, while it's still red and that person takes off right away. And, uh, you're, the person going this way has to slam on brakes. It, because it's so, so much length there, it's not causing any accidents, but it could, because they're, they're making that left.
Well, you've got a yellow light, says you can't go.
Says you can't go to check to yield. The yellow lights for yielding. The other light straight ahead.
What you're reading is turning left.
No, no, they're going straight. They turn out in front of them.
And I'm saying they're turning left, so they've stopped. I'm turning left. I go to turn left. The vehicle behind him comes around him.
On the right.
Yeah.
You're talking about two different things. You're talking about trying to jump the gun on the.
It sounds like when you're saying.
Talking about the previous issue.
People who are passing around on the right hand side of vehicle that has stopped at the stoplight.
Yes. That, that would be any.
They do it continuously.
And it's, yeah, I'll, I'll put that down. The left turns and then the, we'll, we'll, uh, that next operation, main college. So that's the one you're talking about. That's the area.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll add that on there. That'll be, that'll be our.
And I know everybody's frustrated with the traffic.
It, it isn't with them.
But I don't want them to hit me.
Well, there's, there's a difference between having a traffic issue and having a bunch of bad drivers. And I think we, we've seen our fair share of all of those and bad drivers can absolutely impact traffic because especially if they're blocking intersections and passing on the right when they should be yielding and stuff like, so, um, we appreciate your time. Did you have anything else for us?
Yeah, that was all I had.
We do appreciate you.
We do.
Thank you.
All right. Um, Commissioner Johnson, anything else?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, indeed. And Commissioner Wiggins?
I'm done.
All right. Um, so we'll turn things over to Ms. Katie Barber Jones. Do you have any updates for us?
Good evening, everyone. I am really thrilled to be in my fourth week as their in-house town attorney. And I just love working every day with the staff here and thank you for giving me the opportunity. I don't have any public business to discuss. We've got our work session coming up next month, uh, to go over charter stuff. So that's what, been a lot of what I've been working on. Um, and I look forward to discussing it with you then.
All right. Thank you so much. And.
While we're on, Ms. Barbara Jones, uh, I mentioned it before the meeting too, I think, but thanks for your help with, uh, YABBA. Cause we've been trying to get this resolved for almost a year now. And so thanks for helping us get across the fence line.
You're very welcome.
And even during the meeting, so thank you for, for what you presented during the meeting.
I'm sure. And.
Perfect.
Thank you. Outstanding. Um, any additional comments or any reports or the business from staff?
Couple and y'all stole my thunder because we're going to report our traffic plan. The, the rest of my nearly is fun, but I did want to say, um, although Kirsten and Erin weren't able to stay with us for the whole time. It is such a pleasure to have a full staff and bringing Katie on board as well. The whole tone of the office is much lighter. There was a lot of work that was getting done in their absence. Um, and I know that Mayor Flowers is aware of how much work Katie has been doing on the charter because he saw a list of options and decided, there's a work session here and I don't even want to talk about the rest of it because it's too much.
Yeah. So I'm going to interrupt you for one second. It's eight 24 right now and they wanted to have that on the agenda for tonight. And I was like, there's no way that that's going to happen. So we're going to do a work session. So I, I apologize for interrupting you, sir, but please continue.
It's still your meeting, sir. The, we received the first reimbursement from the Mid Street Improvement Project from NCDOT earlier this week. That was $318,000. We received many from Franklin County, um, public utilities throughout the project. This is the first one where we had all of the pay requests from state contracting. It took them a while to get all their stuff together. So we had a, a large amount of money out there. Um, but now those checks are starting to flow regularly back and forth. So we're getting reimbursed. We're still responsible for 20% of the project, but we're being made more for the rest of it. Um, we learned that we hit the third fuel tank on the project today. Um, the first was at the corner of Cross and Main, right? On cross beside Main Street flooring. The second was over near where the old Masonic Lodge was, across the street from the new Masonic Lodge. And this third one was right in front of where Sharon's and Scoop's are. Um, obviously, whatever business was there when those went in the ground isn't there anymore. We don't know who put them in there for sure, if it was half business of the one next to it or whatever. Um, so the town is using this opportunity to clean those up. In all honesty, they probably shouldn't have been permitted to have been put under the ground 50 years ago. Um, and certainly not on public property. Uh, Katie and I do a great job of defending the public property from private approachment now. Uh, but that's, that's why we're doing this sort of thing. At the time, they didn't think fuel tanks were a big idea, a big deal. But now they're 10 grand a pop for us to clean up and potentially depending on what it is found by an environmental investigation, they could be significantly more than that. Most of you may have seen, CSX said they were going to close the road next week. Now they're saying they're going to close the road, road on the 21st and the 22nd. We're not really sure and crazily, they don't need to let us know. Uh, they're, the right of way rules for the railroads are such that everyone has to get out of their way when it's their side to do something. Um, the good news is that they are going to, when they have the railroad shut down to do the crossings, they're going to go ahead and put in our concrete crossing, our beautiful piece that like we paid them for a couple of years ago. All of that is coming. We anticipate the current dates are February 21st and 22nd. They have been told the, by, um, first responders, by the town, by NCDOT, they cannot put truck traffic on Winston and Pine. It will not work. There's not enough room for it. You can get a dump truck or two down there, fine. If you try and bypass Main Street down Winston, you will, it's not going to work. So we've told them that they can do a local traffic on Winston for those two days. They cannot close Pine, Winston and 96 at the same time. Those have to be separate closures. But they're not, they follow what we've told them. We, we don't have as many teeth on that book, but that's what we communicated. And then lastly, um, I'll be on vacation regarding, um, the evening of tomorrow and then back on February 20th, Monday, February 20th. And thank you, Mayor Flowers. That was all I had.
All right. Sounds good. Um, so we do have a closed session item to, uh, discuss. Uh, it's item A. In North Carolina general statutes, 143 dash 318 dot 11A5 to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price for material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange or lease. Um, I entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It is eight 28. We're going into closed session.